Thank you. We'll close public comment on this item. And there was a couple of questions hanging out there. I'll call on Mr. Casey. One, Mr. Gutierrez wanted to know the dollar amount of department head salary reductions. And I guess I would add on to that question, Mr. Casey. Is it already reflected in the 5% cuts? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. If you recall, we had a summary sheet early on in the presentation that talked about departmental reductions. And then in addition to that, labor savings from the different bargaining units. And so the savings I'm going to mention is lumped together in those bargaining unit savings. I believe Mr. Gutierrez asked how much money was going to be saved from the executive management reduction costs? That's about $103,000. And from all of the rest of the unrepresented managers, it's closer to $200,000. Making the same concessions that we're asking from the other bargaining units as well.
Thank you. And then the other question was from a public speaker about Measure C funding essential services. Your answer to that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, sorry. So Measure C was approved by the voters about three years ago. It was approved with a majority vote, so it technically is general fund money that council can spend however, whatever priority they want. We have been spending on a council-approved resolution of priorities, which do include a lot of city facilities and a lot of park and recreation facilities. And so we're making improvements to the capital infrastructure of the Parks Department that then does provide that community-facing services that they provide both of their parks and through the recreation centers. That's one answer, but ultimately it's up to the city council about how to spend the Measure C dollars as you see fit.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman, would you like to kick us off on this discussion? Go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think everybody should take a deep breath, whether you're watching at home. My colleagues just read a big moment, so just take a deep, deep breath with me. So first, I want to say I've been told that I talk too much on the dais and that naturally I'm shy, but I do agree with it. And so I just want to put a little self-appreciated humor at myself right now, just to kind of kick this off. But in all seriousness, before I begin my comments, and I do have some additional proposals tonight that will go beyond what's been presented, I want to thank our staff. In particular, Ms. Tomaszewski and our finance staff for your efforts to present a budget that is revised. And it's been very difficult with the numbers changing due to COVID. So I definitely appreciate the time you spent to get us to this point to have as accurate as can be information, even though it's constantly changing. I also want to thank the public who have contacted us through a variety of means to share your inputs on the budget. Including tonight, I think it's been very helpful and constructive. And I appreciate the tone of tonight's public comment in particular focusing on the positives of what we can do. I do have a few additional proposals for consideration that I will present after some comments. But before I do, I want to share with my colleagues and all of you, the public, my deliberative process over the past couple of weeks, which has led me to these proposals. So you can understand my reasoning for presenting them regardless of whether or not you support them or not. As I mentioned last week, rather than talking, I've been deliberately listening so that I can gain a better understanding of how to respond to the complexity of this moment and where we need to go as a city together. This includes listening to Black Lives Matter and the many protesters, peaceful protesters who've exercised your rights. And I once again want to appreciate the peaceful nature of what you were able to accomplish, because that wasn't accomplished in many communities throughout our country. So I've definitely noticed that, as have others. And I want to thank everyone who has been out there for the multiple protests and the manner in which you conducted yourselves to make your voices heard. It's deeply moving and really was humbling for all of us. I've also read the countless emails that have been sent to us in support of a more humane budget that prioritizes mental health, social health, and equity. And also the many emails that support and encourage us to support our law enforcement and our city institutions as a whole. In addition, over the last couple of weeks in particular, I've taken the time to listen to voices outside of our area and even outside our own time period in order to gain a more broad and in-depth perspective on how to respond and what opportunities we have as a council here tonight. This includes listening to podcasts such as 1619, reading articles on what it means to defund or reimagine policing. I wanted to familiarize myself with those and what they mean. And also reading books and articles about historical figures who grappled with complex problems and uncertainty in their own time. Examples include General George Marshall, who was a World War II general and developed the Marshall Plan afterwards. Civil rights leader A. Philip Randolph and social services icon Dorothy Day were just some of the individuals I came across in my readings. And many of the issues that they dealt with, we are dealing with today. In fact, some of the very same issues. So as I learned about the past and how these leaders responded, I understood their thought processes and how they were able to respond and how they were able to lead a response that was both meaningful and measured and proactive, but not overreactive, because they were in times that were just as emotional and just as quickly changing as our own when you consider World War II civil rights struggles and gender rights and all those. So much to my surprise, as I read and learned more, it was some of the actions that they considered but ultimately decided not to take during their times that had as much of a positive influence on our collective history as the actions that we study and we celebrate. In essence, history proved them right by their measured and strategic response during highly turbulent and emotional times. And this was found in many of those I studied, so it really resonated with me. So when I combine the new perspectives I've learned, I have many more questions now that I've studied them. But I've combined that with my own journey of approximately 18 years of in public service in government. I've come to the following understanding of government action. And it kind of surprised me, but I've come to the understanding that the negative and harmful impacts of a bad government decision, even if done with the best of intentions, does far greater damage than positive outcomes that can arise from a good government decision. And what this means to me is we need to make the change that we've been hearing about, but we need to be strategic and we need to do it right. Because if we do it wrong, the harmful impacts are going to be on those that we are trying to uplift and to protect. And so there is a path forward. I think many of the speakers over the last few weeks have shown that to us. And so I'm going to make some proposals for considering that will hopefully move us in a more humane, community-driven direction that will also make economic sense and will also assist our police officers by providing support on issues which many people today and others have said that they respond to, but they're not necessarily a function of policing. And we need to support our police officers by taking those issues and addressing them proactively. Because by the time they're addressing them, they don't have the training and it's not their job in policing. And so, but they take them because society in general has shifted those issues to policing. So we must move in a direction that we support our community and police, and there's mutual trust. So these are the additional, I'll talk about a couple, but I have some proposals, so I'm going to get to them. So the first is I just want to say I support funding the point-in-time study and the continuum of care. I still don't understand how it's not a line item in our budget and why it was put into human services. That's neither here nor there now. So I want to support that funding this year. And I would like us to have an understanding going for next year so that we don't have this discussion again. We just say it's the right thing to do. We need to have that partnership with our other communities. And I don't want to use the point-in-time funding to take away from direct services that our nonprofit partners are providing or a capital investment that we can use for our most disadvantaged, on our homeless brothers and sisters. Next is the library plaza. Now, for those who know me, the libraries are my passion, both the East Side and the Central Library. I've seen the power of both for the communities. And we are so fortunate to have a gem of a central library and just have that resource for the East Side. It's truly a magical place there for the residents and the families that use that library on the East Side. And I've served on the library board for 10 years. And I first remember the library plaza project, a first iteration coming to the library board somewhere around 2006. So it's going on nearly 15 years. And I want to thank all those who spoke tonight from the foundation and others in support of our libraries. And basically, I'm going to say, we need to fund it. We need to fund the plaza project at the 1.15 million. And it needs to be a strong message sent to the foundation that it's in this year's budget. So that's what I'm going to be, that's what I'm proposing. When you look at, I'm going to use a bad and incorrect sports analogy, so people can really understand where we are, is that we're on the 99-yard line and all we need to go is go the one extra yard to get us in there and have this beautiful center. And I want to take the time, on our libraries in particular, to explain that it's not just a centerpiece of our economic development of our downtown. It's an opportunity to provide community spacing and host community events, arts and culture festivals, ethnic festivals, that we can really use to build community here. And we can even have the opportunity, when we have this new plaza that's welcoming into our library, to close off Annapremo Street and tie it into State Street and really have something special here that will be the envy of many communities all around. So when you consider investing the social equity issues that we need as a society, there are two institutions, when you're talking long-term, that really have the power to transform and address all the issues we've been hearing over the last, not even just a few weeks, but over the last years, decades, but it has really come to fruition in the last couple of weeks. And that is stronger investment in our public education system and a stronger investment in our public library system, because they complement each other. And the more we can invest in those two institutions in particular, because they serve everyone, in particular, the most vulnerable and disadvantaged, they provide safe spaces, the better off we are as a community. So fund it. That's what I want to say about that one. So here's my additional proposals. And the first one ties into the library, but the city as a general. I'd like our city staff to analyze our special events permitting process and come back to us so we understand how it works. It's from what I'm told in my own experiences, it's very complex. You have different departments, the costs are high. So how can we have a more streamlined and efficient permitting process for special events? Because if we have this library plaza, we can have more cultural events. We can even consider how we as a council might want to invest more in our events funding to support smaller events, especially in the downtown area. And also how we can shift some resources, because there is an issue of, are we having more staff such as within the police department? That maybe we could have, for example, when we have to do traffic control. We might have officers doing that right now, but could we have public work staff who are trained in this? Who, with a traffic issue essentially, and it could be thus expensive. And it frees up time for our police to continue to focus on policing issues and not necessarily policing public gatherings and events. So how can we make reforms into this? How can we fund it better? I think it will serve our community better going forward. The next proposal that I want my colleagues to consider is the transfer of parking enforcement from police to public works. It's a natural that our public works, it's more about enforcing the streets. It's a natural with public works. And it also takes the policing presence out of parking tickets. And when I'm looking at things, I don't necessarily agree that a traffic ticket should be a police function when we can have it as a public works function. And this can also help when you're looking at some of the communities that have negative interactions or don't feel protected by the police, that instead of, for whatever reason, if there is a parking ticket, that it comes from public works and not police, it just removes that tension. So I think there are opportunities there, and there could be some cost savings as well, depending on the types of personnel that oversee it, instead of in the higher end of police management versus public works, those types of things. So I think we could get some cost savings and have the same efficiencies. The next one that I want to propose, and I think this is a no-brainer, is my understanding and the conversations I've had with our city staff and with county is that the county mental health has the program with the sheriffs where they provide a trained mental health professional to go out with the officer, and they have two of them. They have funding for a third mental health professional right now that all we have to do is accept it and we can have a mental health professional teamed with one of our own officers to go out on patrol, which I think we desperately need, because having the correct mental health professionals there when someone is having mental health issues can prevent a crisis and can prevent an escalation that could lead to violence or in some cases deaths or incarceration. So I want to get that program up and running. I appreciate the county offering that, so I want to make sure, one, that that is the possibility, and I want to move on that as quickly as we can. The next that I want to propose is the creation of four positions within the city. And they're a combination of the following: mental health professional, a social services professional, and code enforcement. It could be any combination of how, 2-1-1, whatever we need it to be. And these would be the first step, but we would get some information on it, that they would take on community priorities, which have been delegated to police but are not policing functions. Examples include homelessness calls. So for example, if you are a business and you're opening up in the morning and there is a homeless individual and he or she is just asleep in front of your porch, what we do now is we call the police. That is, to me, is not a policing function. If we had proper staffing, additional staffing, we could call these professionals that could come and work with that homeless individual and not only move them along, but build a relationship over time that could get them into the services they need. So it's proactive, it takes the policing out of it. Code enforcement or others could go on to the homeless and camp and cleanups. We might not need officers going down there, which is a heavy expense to us, but we could have staff that is more economic addressing these issues. Mr. Claussen, I know you personally, and one, I am very shocked and very disturbed about what happened with your Black Lives Matter. But I do thank you for sharing with us, because I think it provides us some perspective that we do have a long way to go. And I'm sorry that that happened to you. And by happening to you on your property, it was actually happening to all of our black residents in town, because it's unacceptable that that takes place here. So I just want to say that it really disturbed me when you mentioned that. Because I know where you live, I know you have a tiny library in front of your home, and you really support community there. But along with the four positions, an example that I think you mentioned and that I was thinking about is the gas-powered leaf blowers. If we had an additional code enforcement officer, not a police officer, but within our code enforcement, within community development, that person or persons could then go out and start enforcement on gas-powered leaf blowers, which are an air pollution issue. We haven't found a way to enforce them over time, and it would be more economically efficient. There is no reason that policing should be the enforcement of gas-powered leaf blowers. So those are the types of things I think we can do by implementing these four positions. And we can look at how to fund them. So those are the things I want to fund this year, and I want us to look at. And there's also, I'm almost done, I promise. We also need to take a strategic approach to go even farther than this right now. But as I mentioned, we need to be measured and we need to do this right. I think those things I just mentioned are on the correct path, and they will provide tangible results. But we also, I forget who mentioned it, but someone towards the end of public mentioned it, is that we do need to, and I'd like to ask staff to come back with a full analysis of how the police department currently allocates its resources. What are they spending their time on? And what percentage of these could be considered non-policing functions? So we'll have that data, and we'll understand where we might be able to transfer those out, make them more economical, without impacting the potential for public safety protections of more serious crimes like violent crimes, burglary, thefts, and those types of things that the community also wants us to see. So I want to understand where the police spend their time and how we can begin that conversation and be more proactive while still maintaining the public safety element. And this would support our officers, because I do support our officers in that they have had to take on a lot of responsibility that they shouldn't have to take on. And if we don't change it as council, then who's going to change it? And if we have to set the example here for other communities, so be it. And I think it's the right thing to do. The reason that it's important to have this data, this is kind of my final point, as we get this, is that we have some strategic opportunities coming up within the next year to look at where we can allocate resources in a more economic and socially responsible way. We'll have budget revisions due to the unpredictability of the COVID revenues. So we will have some revises, maybe six months down the line, where we can have some more discussions on where we want to move resources. But in particular, a year from now is the first year of our two-year budget. And for those who don't understand how city government works, we do a two-year budget, and the first year is the big year, because you're setting a two-year spending priority plan. The second year is generally just making sure your revenue is coming in if there's any minor changes you want to do. But the first year really sets you up for a two-year investment in where you want to go. This year is different because of the COVID. It would be, we would have had a much different discussion. But I really want to set us up for success to have, to continue the conversations we have next year by having that data of where the police are spending their time and use it as part of next year's budget. So I'm not going to make a motion right now, but when the time comes to motion, I want to include all these, including the library plaza funding, including the point-in-time and what I just mentioned. But I want to hear from my fellow colleagues on these proposals and others that you might want to propose. Again, apologize for going on long, but I really wanted to emphasize the journey I went through to get to that point and really want to be responsive to everyone in the community that we move forward in a humane way, but also support our police officers as well, because we do need to do both. Thank you.
Mr. Friedman, before you go, I'm sorry, did you say whether you supported the outside request from the chamber? Did I miss that?
I would like to hear from my colleagues. I see the value both ways on it, but I'd like to hear from my colleagues more on it. On the Finance Committee, I actually brought up a proposal not to have outside requests this year. And I do want to honor that, because I think it presents issues with others. But the COVID and the economic recovery that we need to retain our businesses, it's a unique factor that came up after we made that decision. So I want to hear from my colleagues on that before I commit to that.
Thanks. Ms. Sneddon, I have to say that the system missed one public speaker who we should have caught. And I don't want to prevent anyone from speaking who was under the wire. So Ms. Clerk, there's one more person out there, I think. No, it is unusual to close public comment and open it, because we're already deliberating, but Ms. Gorman? What did you say, Mr. Friedman?
I have one more thing, just for Mr. Casey. The proposals that I put forward, because they have to cost out some of the positions, just want to make sure that they would be implemented in a reasonable time as part of the first quarter and not necessarily July 1st, because I want to make sure we have the time to get those positions right. So that's all.
All right, thank you. It's going to take a minute for them to queue up the person, apparently. So Ms. Sneddon, do you want to go ahead?
It's up to you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure. I'd like to hear public comment.
Ms. Gorman, we missed a person. Go ahead.
Yes, yes, Madam Mayor, Chelsea Lancaster, it looks like she may have just gone offline, but let's see if she is back. Chelsea Lancaster, please go ahead. Madam Mayor, it looks like she has left the meeting, so that was it.
Okay, we tried. Sorry about that. Okay, Ms. Sneddon, to your deliberative comments, and if you would, address the outside request from the chamber. But start wherever you want to start, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a heavy evening. I will start with that. We started this process, this budget process, with a status quo budget. We charged our city administrator with coming back to us with a status quo budget, year two of a budget cycle. And then we had COVID. And then when COVID came, trying to address economic freefall, the recommendation was a 5% decrease across all departments, not progressive, which is something I had asked about at the beginning, is it 5% for every department? And that's how it came back to us, and we were working with that. We had already heard from our police their budget description. And then there was George Floyd. And I don't know how else to say, except for there is no status quo after George Floyd. It has changed everything. And even though that wasn't a singular moment that happened in time, that there's been decades leading up to that moment, we can't be the same status quo past that moment. There just isn't that option. Beginning of tonight, Paul Casey said, "Make this budget your own." And it actually really struck me that what we vote on and what we put forward as our budget really does speak for us. And to me, thinking about it, it just really means getting back to basics. And the basics to me are libraries, education, parks and recreation, open spaces, taking care of our homeless. But the very most basic of all of those is equity. We can't enjoy open spaces if we don't have equity for all. We can't enjoy our libraries or our education systems if we don't have equity for all. And it's a heavy charge, but this is the moment when we're called upon to answer that charge. There is no ignoring it. I mean, it goes without saying, I'm white. I've enjoyed only the fullest, best experiences with police officers ever, aside from my first-ever speeding ticket that I just got last month. I have never had the types of experiences that people talk about, but that doesn't mean that I can't listen and learn from what people are describing. We have so many wonderful officers, and this isn't about people. There are always really great officers, and there are those that need help learning better how to approach some issues. But this is really about the system. And when we talk about changes to the system and systemic changes, I want to really emphasize this isn't about the heart of officers when they join the force. I think when officers come on, and we have newly sworn officers, they're coming with a heart of wanting to serve and protect. And it's the system and the way that it is set out for us that creates these inequities. And this isn't unique to Santa Barbara. We have really, relatively, we have a great police department, but this isn't about the people, it's about a systemic system. And even today, Xavier Becerra, our state, California State Attorney, is talking about looking at statewide changes. Nationally, we're looking at this. This is not an attack on our local police department to ask for a very thorough look at how that funding could be reallocated and really address what in my mind is getting back to basics, supporting mental health and social services. and really address what in my mind is getting back to basics, supporting mental health and social services. I'm sure that it would also be the will of our police department to look at how some of these things could be readjusted, how we could have more co-policing or some more diversion programs or restorative justice or alternatives to 911. There are so many great ideas on how to serve the public safety of our community and having police possibly be part of that, that community wellbeing. But this is something that has to structurally be looked at. And Councilmember Friedman offered some fantastic ideas. I am really wanting to stay focused with our Black Lives Matters counterparts, that they are working with us and voicing what it is that, that is most supportive for them. So I don't want to get ahead of what they're asking for without further conversation. So I want to reiterate the support for the Black Lives Matters demands, and those are things that we've already supported. But in this, in our budget, in how we have the, the 33% going to the police budget, it's, it's worth it for all of us to look at how that could be reallocated and moved around. This isn't about dismantling or, you know, completely doing away with policing. This is, it deserves the kind of attention and space to look at it and the, the funding behind it to look at other ways. I'm in support so far of, of Councilmember Friedman's, I think he said 2-on-1 and having new positions in mental health. And then we always say, oh, it's, it's the county, the county takes care of mental health. Well, why, why can't we put some resources behind supporting mental health services and looking at what that might be and supporting more of our social services? Really getting down to that equity issue. Maybe we need some outside consultants to come in and help us restructure. Maybe we do that ourselves, but we, we need to prioritize that and have that very thorough conversation. What I don't want is to do some, some quick token movements that, that seem like we're restructuring things when it's not really fundamentally basic to what we're doing. And, and so we need to structurally create the space to have those conversations and to really affect genuine systemic change. I, I mentioned before a summit and I think that's going to go ahead. But this type of thing, when we're talking about how we do community policing, whether it's beat officers and how, how we do all that in a way that we haven't looked at before in that detail, I think this moment calls for us to really learn more about what it, what it means. And again, if this is, I'm very supportive of the people who are our officers. They have my complete support as, as individuals and, and people who are here to serve our community. It's the system and what more we can do to support that system with mental health, with homeless services and along those lines. So to our specific budget questions tonight, and again, this is a budget that's framed on a status quo and then a 5% reduction to status quo. And I'm just not sure, well, I'm sure that we, we can't just continue with status quo. That, that isn't, isn't where we are anymore. And where we haven't been, but we just didn't know it in the same way, I don't think. So for some specific items, I would like to have that set aside money for the library plaza now. I, I think that's really important to be emphasizing the kinds of activities that that can promote in our community. I would like it to be the $50,000 to Home for Good. I want that restored back into the budget. Very pleased with the $35,000 for Juneteenth. But I think I, I, I definitely want to support, but I, I would like to see if there's council support. And I'd like to propose that we support a black community center, that we, we fund this and that we look at funding a center or celebration for indigenous peoples in our community and Latinx. I mean, I, I think this is all in our social justice. It's time to look at and really support these things in our community with our budget and looking at how, how to really structurally do that. For a black community center, since that seems much more pressing just at the moment for a place to be, a place where there can be mentorship, black history showcase. We don't, we don't have a place, a location for something like that. Skills building, uh, community building. We have a lot of restoration to do. And I think supporting or, or helping to fund a space would be the next step in that so that we could have those conversations and really create the framework to be able to affect some real change. Aside from that, which is nothing small, I mean, this is, these are big, big changes. I think that's, that's where I'll, I'll leave it with that. I think Mr. Friedman has some very interesting ideas. I think I, I, I have actually a hard time when they're verbally set out and I'm not seeing what they are. I, I'm not sure how to, to lay those in the framework with everything else also. So I think the message is that we need something, um, a bigger, a bigger systematic change in our, in our budget.
Thank you, Ms. Sneddon. Ms. Harmon, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna try to keep my comments brief. I agree with my colleagues, fully support a continuing, ongoing community conversation and dialogue particularly around issues related to policing in our community. But I, I mean, I heard from the folks that emailed, from the people that called in, that they didn't want just a commitment to a conversation tonight, that they wanted us to take tangible action in our budget to reflect our stated values. So with that, I am going to go through my suggestions and, and not talk about the community conversation. I support it. I want to have it. We all are committed to it. But I, I want to talk about the things we're going to do in this budget or that, that I would support us doing. First, and I'm going to look at my notes because I really just would like to stay as focused as possible. And on the point in time, Home for Good funding, I'm with my colleagues on this. I appreciate that staff had suggested that they apply to the CDBG funding process, but that's really not a framework that I think is applicable. And it's not an approach that I support. I agree with my colleagues that this should be a line item. We hear over and over again that houselessness is a regional issue, that it can only be addressed through a multi-intra-jurisdictional approach. To remove this mon, this funding seems to fly in the face of, of that understanding. It's, it reflects the opposite of, of engagement and coordination. So, so I would like to see that returned. On the library plaza, I agree with my colleagues. I, I think it's a great solution that was presented, that we use some of the reserve funds to cover that. So strongly support that money being allocated to the library plaza project. On the police reforms within the budget. So I'm going to go over what I think I heard Councilmember Friedman suggest and sort of pick those out. Though I, he and I are coming at it, I think from a little bit of a different perspective. But I, I do think some of the changes that he recommended are, are meaningful and important. And there are changes that we can make tonight, not as the end of the conversation, but as a start. First, working more concretely and closely with co-response. This is huge. This is a recognition of the importance of community mental health. And it's literally putting our money where our mouth is. And so that's a key piece. Increasing the number of positions for social workers. I believe that was something he said for, for positions that could be social workers or community mental health workers. Those are changes that begin to reflect the transformation of our budget into one that, that reflects back our community's ideals. Those are changes that we heard over and over again from commenters coming from many different angles that are, that these changes are important and valuable. I think they're changes that we can absolutely make right now and should move forward with, I think Councilmember Friedman said it's doable by the end of quarter one. That seems very reasonable to me. And I would strongly support us doing that. I think he also mentioned moving parking enforcement out of the purview of the police department and into po, public works, excuse me. That may seem small, but it's actually a huge thing. It's a really important shift because it signifies our collective desire to move non-police functions out of that department. If a situation is nonviolent, if it involves mental health or substance abuse or a small code, minor code infraction, changes like this are about finding and funding the right people to mediate and resolve these situations outside the law enforcement context. So it really is a, an important step. Is it the end? Certainly not. But it's an important thing that we do, that we begin to find functions that don't need to be housed within our police department and move those into departments where they're more appropriately housed. So again, I would really support and, and ask that my colleagues support tangible action tonight, putting parking enforcement into public works, increasing the number of social works, social workers or equivalent mental health workers, calling on clinicians to respond to calls vis a vis co-response. These changes will shift essential functions away from law enforcement and toward professionals that are better suited to community response. This is what we have heard from the callers, from the emailers. And I think that they deserve that we take tangible steps in that direction tonight. So I'm very much support those and look, look forward to voting in favor of those changes.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no way I am going to top those three's narrative. What's clear to me is though that we have an opportunity to make these changes tonight, whether tangible or start down a meaning, a meaningful path. You know, I've been, I've been, it's, it's fortunate to have late twenties and thirty-year-old daughters because they, despite being from two white parents, they have an entirely different perspective of a male parent or, you know, sixty-year-old white people. And just the amount of reading I've done on just, uh, for first time ever on the legacy of, of how policing began and what that meant back in the end of slavery and, and how that was a historical, um, a historical start of the reinforced inequity in the, in the justice system that still is with us today. Again, I think it was Ms. Sneddon who said, never has that been a personal experience with her. And I would tell you, that's never been a personal experience with me too. I kind of shook my head at an early public, um, a public speaker who said, you know, I, I was never raised to be a racist as a white, as a white person. Well, that's, that's the point. You were never in the shoes of a person of color to get that perspective. And my perspective or your perspective is certainly not what the real perspective is. The, the only, I guess, cautioning statement I would like to make before I talk about the points that have been made already is I believe we have a legal obligation to have an adopted budget in the next fourteen or fifteen days, a balanced budget. And I would just caution my fellow council members that that document has to be ready with either your thoughts and your plans or a path to them after adoption. And I don't know which is the easier one in some of these. But I'm, I, I really think Councilmember Friedman set this all up with both his, uh, his talk about the work he's done and how he got to where he is today. And I, I believe that his points are both simple and not simple. And so I'll just go through them and get us to the, get us to the end of the chase pretty quick. I too support the return of the funding and on an annual basis to the point in time, point in time count and the continuum of care. I think that should be a line item annually and we should participate in that endeavor as others are. It's also clear to me that a choice is going to have to be made on, on probably a redirection of Measure C funds and that overwhelmingly the, the library plaza is, is not just an investment in concrete and, and improvements, but it's an investment in the community that needs to be made and needs to move forward now. Again, I think Mr. Friedman said it much more articulately than I will have, I will be able to. But it, it is a, it is a core and significant function of this community in so many ways. And it cannot afford to wait another year or longer due to the uncertain message we would send by not moving it forward. I also am then very intrigued by really what Eric had for five items, not just four. And that was analyzing the permitting process for special, special events and looking for a way to move that out of a police department setting or really an enforcement setting and move it into more, what I would, I would think he means is a more collaborative, engaged setting than that type of environment. Also in favor of looking at moving parking enforcement to public works for all the reasons you've heard already. Those two to me seem almost that they're not going to happen in fourteen days particularly, that, that those need to have a conversation with the community and see what that means and how that's going to happen. The third and fourth points were the, um, the, the co-response units and then figuring out a way to fund four or more positions across the spectrum of mental health, social service and code enforcement. And I'm, I'm not too concerned about the number. What I would like to just see is an effort to do the most we can to move what Ms. Harmon called the non-police functions out of a policing environment. And if we need to start with four positions, great. But I think we also need to have a process with the, with the police department, the community and the stakeholders on what else is out there that the police do and what would the community like to see that look like in a different setting? And what that would look like to get to there. I think part of that was, was Eric's fifth point, and that was an analysis of data on what the police actually do. And that's what I, that's what I'd really like to see because that would drive, that would drive. I think it's going to be an eye-opener both to us and to other members of the community about how much we ask the police department and the, and the officers there to do and that, that has just been given to them because no one else would do it. And it's time to put that in the right place and put the, put the actual resources behind it and leave policing to just criminal behavior and not social behavior. and leave policing to just criminal behavior and not social behavior. The uh nobody's, I think uh there was only one comment on the chamber proposal. I think the chamber proposal is a time and place proposal that has merit for me from a, from a business sense and my familiarity with downtown. We're at a point where we are uh economically just seemingly swallowing ourselves downtown. There would be some who say that the city has just uh funded that type of effort, but I see this as a, as a uh ground level stakeholder effort coming up to meet what is a city bureaucratic level of support coming down to talk to them. And I see it as a hand in hand, a sort of public-private um uh opportunity to, in my, in my experience, to actually get the stakeholders uh in the conversation that haven't been before. And in particular, that's the property owners, not the businesses. And then the only other question I have after listening to all this is, in a month, we're going to see a report back or a presentation back on a um, on the choices and the concepts of a police review board. And I would imagine that that is going to be an effort that needs to move forward and have some type of resources behind it. So I would not envision that coming back and having a presentation and letting somebody a staff presentation feed council and council just make a decision. I, if, if not hearing how that's going to be supported at this time, I think we should have in the back of our minds. We should have a um, a plan to be ready to give that the support it needs to talk about it with all the stakeholders, with the community groups, and do a ver- uh just a really good job on vetting it, involving, engaging people, and um making sure that uh we are ready to put the resources into that. So that would be the only other item to the list that uh I would add to that. And I know it's the, it's a, it's, I don't know what, I don't even know what I'm suggesting in terms of scope or what that will be. But uh I see that uh, I see that as a several month process to uh, to have staff involved, to have us involved, to have meetings involved. And um I intend to uh make sure that we have the resources to, to put to that effort too. So those are my comments, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sneddon, something to add?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um just to add that, that one of the um suggestions that I really wanted to emphasize was funding toward a black community center. And I, I have, I haven't heard one way or the other from other council members if um because I'm, I'm assuming that Councilmember Friedman will be making the motion eventually, so I just wanted to um re-highlight that as something that I would like considered um by council members.
Thank you. Ms. Gutierrez, go ahead, please.
So from the two million, give me one second.
Madam Mayor, while she's taking a second, I'll get back in. Um I had two other points that I wasn't reading my notes very well is, is one, I would agree that um I would agree to put that on the list of uh, of a black community center or a person of color community center. I think that is moving towards that as part of the discussion, so I would agree with that too. And the other point on the um, the chamber proposal that I, I didn't talk about, if I could just take thirty seconds. I do not agree with the structure as it's been asked. I think that's way too big of a commitment and the dollar amount is way too high. I would support something in the fifty thousand dollar range, again, to talk about a small number. I think what's wrong with that proposal is, is right now is it disproportionately puts the city as the um, the prime contributor at the expense of the people or not at the expense of the people who are going to benefit the most, and that's the property owners. They should be the prime contributor to that effort. Okay? Thank you, Ms. Gutierrez.
Thanks, Mr. Jordan. I agree with you on that. Ms. Gutierrez, go ahead.
So from the two million that we're not gonna be using for the construction of the new police department this year, can we use some of that money to do an organizational review of the police department, just like we did for the community development department and um the downtown business area?
Mr. Casey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Alejandro Gutierrez. Unfortunately, no, that's already kind of baked into the proposed balancing budget that we have. We had already recommended not funding the two million dollars as kind of the COVID response uh to get to a repackaged capital program. So not to say that the idea of doing the study isn't a bad idea, but that isn't a pot of money that's just waiting there to be used.
I, I would like this study to be done. Is there any way that staff can help me find money for this study? Or I don't know how my colleagues feel. It's just a lot of the conversation we've had um about suggestions, how the police department is going to work alongside with the communities and hearing some of the concerns from public comment. I think it's just fair. You know, and, and Mr. Friedman also talked about reevaluating some of the work that the PD does. I think it's just, it's fair that we review the whole organization and see where our gaps are and maybe areas that we are actually doing a really good job in. I think it's fair.
Well, that is a good question. So the chief, I know, is committed to uh reviewing her operations and um I'm hearing support for some, most of Mr. Friedman's suggestions, and that would take some resources. So uh Mr. Casey, uh what would, I mean, I mean, if we were to look for uh resources, what would that be? And I guess I'll just jump in that, you know, this request from the chamber is the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If fifty of that is already going to Home for Good, if we need resources to really develop a civilian review board, and if we need resources to help the chief look at, at her department and make changes, I would rather that money go to those causes and um rather than the chamber request, as much as I respect their, where they're coming from and what they're, and what they're trying to do. But I guess we're talking about money. It's the budget season. Mr. Casey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Um so I'm still listening to kind of where your consensus is going to be. And then we'll figure out how to fund it. I mean, this is a tough budget. I, I, there are no easy socks to go find money lying around for, but these are important times as well. And, and some of these items are kind of one-time items to do studies and such, and so we can dip a little further into reserves. And I, I don't think that's necessarily a bad suggestion at this point. Rather than cutting some other department more, which I don't sense a big appetite uh from any of you to go there. So I think that we are kind of looking at uh that use of reserves to kind of bridge us to where we need to go. And if these are certain priorities that is important to do, then that, that's where I would suggest you find the money. With regards to kind of that allocation study or whatever, I'm intrigued by that idea. I always do think it helps to uh bring in someone who kind of has expertise in that world and give us that additional outside analysis of where the police department is spending their time and focus. It takes a little bit longer, and so I'm trying to balance my suggestion to you about how to consider that, because I think that I'm hearing from you all a desire to move uh quickly, not, not, not too fast, but I think, you know, coming back by the end of the first quarter is a reasonable period of time for us to work through those issues. And like if we threw in uh an outside analysis, it might take a little bit longer, but I think that might be really valuable information to get this right. And that would be, that's where my tendency is, is to get it right. This is really fundamental changes that you're talking about, and so I'd rather take a little more time and get it right. Uh but that, that's food for thought for you all to consider and give me your thoughts and reaction to.
Okay, we got a thumbs up from Ms. Sneddon. Mr. Gutierrez, and then I have comments as well. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh yeah, first, I, I just want to thank everyone who's called in and voiced their, their um opinions and concerns and thank the city staff for um presenting to us. Yeah, we definitely are living in interesting times and it's, it's the time to, to listen to the people and uh and do our best to do what they are asking of us. I, I personally feel like our PD shouldn't have anything to hide. And they should definitely be outspoken about how well they say they police our community. So I would, I would um support what my colleague Alejandro Gutierrez was suggesting about a review of the police. Because I think uh, well, I would hope it would come out positively. And uh and yeah, I, I just want to keep it short and say that I agree with what my council members have been proposing. I just want to emphasize that I, I know it's not as much as everyone wants us to be cutting. But we are doing that. We are cutting, and this is just the start of it. This isn't just like a one-time thing, like I've been reiterating. It's, this is permanent. You know, we're gonna be meeting with all these stakeholders in the community and listening to their needs and, and taking action on it from now on. So yeah, that's, that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Um I'll start in um supporting the Library Plaza and the way people described it and wanting to take the focus away from law enforcement and rather putting it on um community services. And the library serves our, our homeless neighbors. It serves people looking for work. It serves our teens and people of all economic status. And so I, I love that that is one of the questions that we have today because it, it does respond to the call from our community uh to fund city services that um benefit families and people and, and people of color. And really helps people have um, or young people have academic achievement. And that's the, the standard that we're trying to raise and support everyone. The Home for Good uh proposal, yes, uh that one too. I heard a lot of concern about um our homeless and how do we help them? I, turning to the police department, um I am looking forward to the summit that we've um ordered to be organized so that people can talk to the police chief about what kind of changes and reform they want in the police department. Mr. um Friedman, a great list, a great start about moving some functions out of the police department and into other uh divisions in the city so that we start to fulfill that call for ch- for change. And I, I respect that the chief wants to hear from the community and work with her officers so that they can come to this place where um they're making these changes, accepting these changes, and, and really they're the ones who will be carrying it out with us, with us watching. I believe we need to hire the right kind of police officer. So I'm very interested in, in the hiring practices, training, monitoring the relationships that our police officers have with community members. And that means opening communication with our residents. Because if they trust us, if they, and if they trust the police department, they will report misconduct. I know the chief doesn't want officers in her department that aren't fully respectful and caring about um our families. Uh data reporting, very important. When is force used? And what are the demographics that are involved around incidences of um a firearm being used or force? What was the gender of the person? What was the, the race of the person, the age? Because we, we need to start teasing that apart. Is there prejudice? Is there anti-blackness, anti-brownness in this community? And we, and looking at the data will um start to, to help us understand that. On the community side, our city needs to be engaged with our black community and our, and we as council members need to be engaged too. Uh we need to take an interest in people's healthcare, their education, their cultural life and, and support and support everyone who lives in this city or visits this city. Um but just a note on housing for the homeless, because I, I heard a lot about caring for um our, our houseless residents. It's absolutely proven that when we house someone, it costs less money than, than the law enforcement response that it takes to uh control their behavior. And it, and it saves money on visits to the ER and public health because they can't ever get, can't ever get healthy. So I, I, looking um forward, looking, looking broadly, um we should be doing everything we can uh to create housing for people who are living on the streets. And I already talked a little bit about the chamber request because I, I just feel like if we're using one-time money and we're really focused on helping in the social services respect, the human services respect, helping our police department have events and conversations, you know, that takes resources. That I would rather have that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh go to uh one, Home for Good. And two, the process to review and vet the civilian uh review board formation. Um and also uh um the, the conversations that, that we're going to have. I, I'd like to talk to schools and churches. Um this is a community effort. So I think our resources can go uh to, 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 I, I don't support the, the chamber request. I also think we need to support the businesses that are already here. The chamber request is about recruiting businesses to come in. I think there's a time for that. Why don't we focus on black-owned businesses in the city of Santa Barbara? How do we, how do we help them? Everyone's hurting after the pandemic. So I'm looking at um Councilmember Friedman's ideas. I would forward these to the chief because you're talking about changes related to, you know, to her and Public Works? Because you're talking about changes in those um, in those specific um departments. And a, a community center, um I was thinking about some spaces around town. I'm, I'm thinking it would be a city a public-private partnership that pursued uh creating a space that looked like a, like a community center. And I was really inspired to hear people talk about a place for teens. A place for uh cultural events, a museum of sorts for artifacts and pride. And um a, a place, a place where people felt welcome. And we want Santa Barbara to, to be welcoming of our black community, all people of color. So I, I do support that as well. And um so I would turn it over to Mr. Casey at this point. I think I've answered all the questions that, and then I think the final thing that I would say is that if we're putting on hold the um ADA work and our accessibility projects, for me, those are one of the first things that I want restored when our revenue sources come back. So that's the final thing that I'll say. And I'll ask our city administrator to, to help us focus. Let me know if we need a motion or let me, let me hear from you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, a motion is in order uh to give us directions about how you want to amend the budget that we've put before you. Um I, I, it appears that there's some consensus forming around that. But certainly need a motion on Library Plaza, just to make sure that's really clear that we're funding that. And again, staff is very supportive of the Library Plaza project. It was just, I think, a miscommunication three months ago when we were putting the budget together uh about whether the fundraising was gonna kick off in this climate or not, and the fact that the Library Foundation is coming back and saying, yes, they want to go. We're excited about that and, and thrilled that they want to do that. And we think it's a fabulous project for all the reasons you all have, have said. Uh but yes, so a motion on Library Plaza, a motion- But yes, so a motion on Library Plaza, a motion on the point-in-time count. I'm hearing that you want to fund the point-in-time count and make it a, a line item budget in future years, so that could be part of the motion as well. And then however you all want to craft and decide where a majority of you is on the, on the police department stuff, that's good. And then, and giving a little guidance on whether you want us to do, bring in someone to help us with kind of a utilization analysis of where the police department is spending time to kind of have that database, like a little guidance on that. My recommendation would be that we use the finance committee during the first quarter to kind of check in on those issues where it sounds like we're going, so that you've got a forum that's already being televised, it's very accessible to the public, that we can use during the summer months to, to check in and see if we're in the right direction and at least keep a subcommittee of you informed. So those are my initial thoughts, but yes, ultimately, we do need a motion from you all to give us guidance to move forward.
May I have a motion, please, on Library Plaza? Mr. Friedman?
Do you want me to, to do individual motions or to try to sum this up into one large motion? Because I think I've captured it. We could go either way.
Go ahead. If you think you're good, you can make a big, big fat motion, go ahead.
I, I think I can, and feel free to step in if I miss it. So it's adopting the budget with the following recommend, or the following changes. Is the funding for the point-in-time count and continuum of care at $50,000? Funding of Library Plaza at $1.15 million? The, looking at the, having an, an outside look at our police department, coming back to the process to have an outside look at our police department, which would also include an evaluation of how they're spending their current resources, among other things. Moving parking enforcement to Public Works. Finding the funding for a minimum of four positions related to social work professionals, mental health, and code enforcement. Working with the county for the co-response that is out there for the mental health professional with our officer. An evaluation of the special events permitting process. And, and working with the, the community, the African-American community on, on a path to a community center. So reaching out with them to scope the project, understand what their needs are and what they're envisioning, the size of it, and then we can get a better understanding of what the costs are after we talk with them on what they're, what they're envisioning. And then coming back to us when we have more information after talking with them. And I'm not going to include the chamber, it doesn't seem like there's the support for that now, because we'd rather invest that in, in some of these other factors that we have here, including, including the, the outreach that we're going to need to be doing for the police review and, and other things that the mayor mentioned. So I'll make that motion with all those. And for those that can be implemented by July 1st, great, but some of these, such as the community center, the moving of parking enforcement, the outside agent, come back within a reasonable time, within the first quarter to, to either implement or give us a status update on it.
Is there a second? Okay, a second from Ms. Harmon. Any discussion from you, Ms. Harmon? No, she went on. Ms. Snedden, any discussion from you on the motion?
No, fully supportive, sorry.
Mr. Jordan?
Just have a question on the details, Madam Mayor, and so in particular, when we talk about $50,000 for the point-in-time and $1.15 million for the Library Plaza, are we just saying, go find it, and Mr. Casey just goes and finds it wherever he wants to? Or is there an expectation on where that's going to come from? Will it come out of the bucket of the, the remaining reserves? Will it come from another part in the budget? How does that actually look when it comes back?
I think he would tell us when he comes back. Did you want to respond now, Mr. Casey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Yeah, I, I would prefer a little more direction than that. I'll tell you what I think I had been hearing. One, I want to be clear in the motion that we believe that the funding gap for Library Plaza is 1.115, not 1.15, just want to clarify that number, because we think that's what we had budgeted before. But I, I had kind of been under the assumption that we're looking at Measure C money for the Library Plaza and not going to the general fund reserves to fund that. So I would like kind of clarification on that, and we can look at it. Again, I, I'm not hearing a desire to pull out some of the other projects that are outlined specifically in Measure C, like the Louise Lowry Davis Center project or not. So I don't know if you're looking at streets funding as the toggle point there, but I could use a little guidance there. With regards to the point-in-time count, we think we can use SEP funds for this year, but we don't think that's a good use on an ongoing basis. And so my recommendation on that would be that we use the SEP funding for this year and then build it in as a baseline general fund cost going forward. But it will have to be general fund going forward on the point-in-time count.
And then the way I was understanding is on the first quarter items, that will be something for you to ponder and bring back in the first three months of the fiscal year, how we get there and anything else you would need. Is that right?
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, yes. My only caveat is if we're going to bring in someone outside to look at the police department a little bit more thoroughly. I don't know if we're going to be able to complete that all in one quarter. But again, my request would be is that you also direct us to work with the finance committee for kind of regular check-ins on these items, and so that we're reporting to a group and, and monitoring the progress. And I, I clearly hear the impetus to move. I just don't want to put an artificial date that I can't meet if we're doing a little extra analysis.
Okay, I'll let the motion makers see how they're going to direct the 1.15 million treasure hunt. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So am I understanding you correctly, Mr. Casey? You're asking if we would take money away from the Louise Lowry Davis project or pavement, the pavement program? Do, or do you think you and Ms. Bjork need more time to comb through the Measure C projects and come back with something that continues to support our families and our youth and doesn't take away from them, I guess?
You know, Madam Mayor, I'll start, and then I see Ms. Bjork coming on. If, if you look in the, in the budget balancing packet and you look at Measure C funding and kind of the revised amounts of what we're doing from a capital standpoint, there's only a few items that's going to get you the 1.115 million. So, you know, I, I don't think you want us to stop work on the Central Library ADA, the, the library elevator. Louise Lowry Davis is $935,000. That really supports your seniors in the community and has been something we've been putting off. So that, that's the struggle that we come with of looking at that. Ms. Bjork, you want to chime in before I make a final suggestion?
I do. I, I agree with Mr. Casey. I think the best place to take that money is from pavement, regrettably. I will make an effort to come to finance committee and, and talk more about how the pavement funding goes, because I'm recognizing that the work we did on that previously was with a largely different council. And so I owe you an update on that, but I think for this issue, we need to take it from the pavement project.
Okay, thoughts on that? Ms. Snedden, we'll just go down the line that I'm looking at. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I think in the original motion, I, I think you, Councilmember Friedman, you might have referenced continuum of care rather than coordinated entry. Just wanted to make sure we're really clear on that 50,000.
Good catch, late at night, but you are correct.
Thank you. And then Councilmember Jordan had mentioned a smaller amount that he would be in support of going to the Chamber of Commerce, and I, I would be supportive of a smaller amount too. I just think it's a, a timing issue where, where, you know, we have put funding into downtown and have put funding into economic development, and we, we haven't put funding into these sort of large pressing issues now. So regrettably, I think we don't have the funding for it right now in that way, but I, I would be supportive of a smaller amount if that was proposed.
Let's make it a second motion, since this one is so full.
I won't make the motion, but if, if it's, if it's made, I would support it.
Okay. Ms. Harmon, your thoughts on where we stand right now?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I agree with Councilmember Snedden about being supportive of a, a smaller amount. So I just, we'll put that out there. I had one quick question for Ms. Bjork about the 1.115 funding. If I remember correctly from your presentation, Ms. Bjork, the streets fund or the pavement fund that this would be coming out of, it's the reserves, right? But, because I thought you were saying something about reserves.
We don't have a reserve in that fund, Councilmember Harmon. It's more that how we were going to manage that fund to make sure that the money is actually there before we commit to spending it. And the streets fund, that particular line item lends itself well to that. We can do all the work to get ready. We will continue to need to do paving, so if we're unable to do the work we need to do next year, we'll just do it the following year. This will, that's, that's fine.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for throwing, I appreciate that.
Okay, Mr. Friedman?
So I just wanted to clarify, is it 1.15 or 1.115? I've heard two different numbers. I just want to make sure I have the right number.
Ms. Bjork will nod with me. 1.115.
All right, so I'll change it to 1.115. Out of the funding that was just recommended from Ms. Bjork, support the, coming back to finance to check in on the items that were deferred through the first quarter, and if we need to go further on some of them, at least as we are checking with the finance, so we're aware of that and the public's aware of it, for anything that might take longer on those other items. And we'll do the, the chambers separately, because it doesn't feel that we have a majority on that right now. So do we need anything else, Mr. Casey or Ms. Clerk, for the motion?
Yeah, yeah, we go now to Ms. Gorman to read it back to us, I think. Ms. Snedden, something else?
I just want to really thank staff. I mean, it's nearly midnight, and every time we have a question, you all are standing by and, and popping up on the screen. And before we get to the vote, I just wanted to say just a very especially thank you. I know we all, all feel that way.
Thanks. Ms. Gorman?
Madam Mayor and council, I will give a shot here, and please correct me as we go along with the motion. Motion by Councilmember Friedman, seconded by Councilmember Harmon, to adopt the budget with the following changes. Funding for the point-in-time count of 50,000 for coordinated entry. The Library Plaza at 1.15 million. Having an out-
Sarah, Sarah, real quick, that's 1.115.
1.115, very good. Having an outside look at the police department, including evaluation of how current resources are spent. Moving parking enforcement to Public Works. Finding funding for a minimum of four positions related to social work, mental health, code enforcement. Working with the county for co-response. Evaluation of the special events permitting process. And working with the African-American community on a path to a community center.
Does that sound right to the motion maker and the seconder?
That sounds right to me.
Is there any other discussion before, okay, you're nodding, Ms. Harmon, thanks. Any other discussion before we take a roll call vote? Ms. Clerk, at your, at your convenience?
Really, it's convenience even. Mayor and mayor, mayor and council, this is the motion by Councilmember Friedman, seconded by Councilmember Harmon, as read a moment ago. Councilmember Jordan?
Aye.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Snedden?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez?
Aye.
And Mayor Maria?
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Do we have, thank you, Ms. Gorman, thank you so much. Do we have a motion, Ms. Harmon, on the chamber item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, it seems like there was some interest in this from many of my colleagues, just maybe not at the $150,000 level. So I would propose that we match the contribution of the property owners and contribute 25,000 to this really important effort that will work with the other programs that we've put in place to see a really vibrant downtown. So I don't know if my colleagues have any feedback on that specific number. I just, it struck me as, as a reasonable number.
Well, I do like that idea, especially since Visit Santa Barbara is one of the entities kicking in some money, and we give them money. So I think there's some double support there. Mr. Jordan, your opinion?
I'll second that. I'm fine with that. That's great.
Is there any other discussion to the motion to fund the Santa Barbara Galita Chamber request at $25,000? Ms. Clerk, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
This is on the motion by Councilmember Harmon, seconded by Councilmember Jordan, to match the contributions to the property owners to the Chamber of Commerce and contribute 25,000. Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez?
I'm sorry. Ms. Harmon, can you repeat your suggestion, please, one, one more time?
Yes, of course. It was to fund the downtown business recruitment out of the chamber at a $25,000 level instead of the 150 level that they requested.
Okay, thank you. My vote is yes.
Mayor Potem Snedden?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Aye.
And Mayor Maria?
Aye. That was unanimous, it seemed, Ms. Clerk. Thank you so much to Ms. Chalmashevsky and all of our budget people. This is a big deal. Thank you so much to the community members who called in and who are bearing with this virtual meeting format. Ms. Clerk, is there anything else on our agenda or any other items? I don't think so.
Madam Mayor, no.
Okay. With thanks to everyone, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.